I want to welcome everyone to the Landale City Council regular meeting, Monday, May eighteenth, two thousand. I'm going to ask the city clerk, Assistant Clerk rather, to give us the roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Mayor Paul Miles?
Here. Okay, let's have a flag, um, uh, thank, thank you for that. Let's have a, um, present allegiance made by Councilmember Pat Kearney.
Are we all facing a flag? Okay, if you're, here I go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, um, councilmembers. Now, let's hear from our Captain Allen. Let's give the public safety report. I am, let's see. Captain Allen?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for May eleventh through May eighteenth. As always, I want to continue to thank the citizens of Landale who continue to do a great job following the rules and regulations set by the Los Angeles County Health Department. As we go forward and regulations begin to ease, it is important to note that we still need to continue practicing social distancing when out in public. Social distancing means maintaining at least six feet of physical distance from individuals who are not members of the same household, frequently washing hands with soap and water for at least twenty seconds, or using hand sanitizer that contains sixty percent alcohol, wearing a cloth face mask covering when in contact with others who do, who do not live in the same household or living unit, and avoiding all physical interaction outside the household when sick with fever or cough, except for medical care. These rules will continue to stay in place, but should begin to ease over the next few weeks. Information regarding social distancing, businesses, openings, et cetera, are constantly being evaluated, and more information will be forthcoming as we continue to move forward. During the past two weeks, calls for service have increasingly, have increased slightly from previous all-time lows. We have begun to see a slight increase in overall crime statistics, specifically burglary and theft, which continue to be down thirty-three and one percent respectfully. We still continue to see an increase in grand theft automobiles and theft from vehicles. Most vehicles being stolen are older model Chevys and Hondas. This increase is occurring throughout the county and not just in the city of Landale. Due to the fact more people have their vehicles parked during the day is one of the reasons why this is happening. The criminal element has more opportunities to steal vehicles, um, from our streets. Um, these thefts continue to come, however, from vehicles whose doors were unlocked and windows were down. As a reminder, please, as a reminder, please remember to lock your car, take your keys, and have your belongings. This would prevent over fifty percent of the theft crimes occurring in our city. As always, if you see any suspicious, anyone suspicious in your neighborhood, please call the Sheriff's Department. And if you have information regarding crimes, you can report them anonymously at Crime Stoppers and receive awards. Their number is one eight hundred seven seven tips. Once again, that is one eight hundred seven seven tips. In regards to the Best Western Hotel, your S A O teams have been assigned with total location, as the hotel has received all of its occupants. To date, we have had, um, no events criminal in nature to report. Um, lastly, during conversation with the city manager, he mentioned in the past the city council held quarterly meetings, uh, with the station captain to address any law enforcement concerns. I'm hoping we can continue that practice in the near future. Um, this concludes my report, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Captain Allen. Are there any questions of the captain's report by the council? And, uh, thank you, Captain Allen, for that report, for the fine work your, your deputies do for the city of Landale.
Uh, thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Next item on our agenda is oral communication. Mr. Assistant City Clerk, have we received any oral communications? If so, will you please proceed?
Yes, Mayor, we have, uh, two, uh, public comments. I'll go ahead and, uh, read the first one. Uh, Randall Abram, Landale resident. The number of COVID nineteen cases in Landale has tripled since April fifteenth, twenty twenty to today's update, from thirty to ninety cases. In the last week, there have been ten new cases. Since the outbreak, there have been two deaths in Landale due to Corona, due to the coronavirus. Based on population, Los Angeles County reporting is that Landale's rate is higher than most surrounding cities. The Los Angeles County website tracks clusters of cases in nursing homes, grocery stores, and other locations of where people congregate. Landale's cases do not show up in these settings. Is it the city of, is the city of Landale tracking where the city, where in the city these ninety cases have occurred? Has there been any contact tracing of Landale's cases to prevent the further spread of the pandemic? Testing is available free for county residents with a site nearby at the Galleria. Does the city receive any feedback, feedback added to the numbers of Landale residents tested? Although the specific names of those tested would be confidential, the results of how many Landale residents tested negative or positive will provide an important indication of how prevalent COVID nineteen is currently in Landale. From those that tested positive, the process of contract tracing could be initiated to reduce the spread of this deadly pandemic. Is the city of Landale coordinating this process with the county of Los Angeles? Some cities have gone beyond state and county mandates. The city of Los Angeles, Carson, and Inglewood initiated strong masking requirements early on. Manhattan Beach issued a thousand dollar citation for entering closed parks. Perhaps some of these might not be applicable in Landale, but the cities, but the cities simply, but has the city simply followed along the state and county or taken additional actions to stop the spread of the pandemic? Okay, and our second public comment is from Pam London, Landale resident. Governor Gavin Newsom expressed interest in using tax money to purchase some of the hotels and turning them into permanent housing after COVID restrictions began to lift. Has anyone with the city of Landale found out if we are going to have more hotels sign agreements, whether or not the state plans to purchase any property in Landale to transform it into permanent housing going forward? What do any of you know, and how can you reassure residents who are on this? As I stated during the last meeting, this is not a not-in-my-backyard issue. This is an impact issue. Landale is less than two square miles. Our law enforcement numbers on any given shift are minimal, to say the least. Landale cannot afford more officers, and we are too small as a city to be expected to. I'm still waiting for a response as to whether or not the state plans to purchase the Best Western. Are there, are there more hotels signing agreements? Your avoidance to answer my questions will add to the rumor mill, causing more distrust in the city. Please respond. In an update on the Best Western, I see that there are two security guards twenty-four hours a day, and we have a sheriff, and we have sheriff deputies at the Best Western, too. Why if there have not been any, why if there have not been any problems? We can't afford, we cannot afford for our deputies to be tied up mediously at the Best Western instead of patrolling our streets and answering calls for criminal behavior. Is this city going to be reimbursed? Is the Best Western going to pay for this? Are residents being put at further risk because an officer is being taken out of service? If the city council is working on behalf of the residents of Landale, you owe each of, every one of us an answer. Is the state planning to purchase the Best Western for a permanent homeless shelter? If not, what will become of these people when the state no longer paying for the Best Western rooms? Will they be turned out on our street, or will they be moved to another location? Are there more hotels signing agreements? If you do not have an answer to these questions, let us know. Either get the answer or tell us who to call. If we need to do your job, then maybe you need to rethink your position with the city and your city, and your positions on council. Other cities have fought and lost. Landale did not even fight. Other cities have residents that care, residents that picketed. Landale did not. What and who will stop them from further destruction of this city? What else will they be able to get away with? What else are they going to shove down on us? That ends public comment, Mayor.
Okay, thank you for those public comments, um, Mr. Assistant City Clerk. Let's have any response from the, the council. If anyone would like to provide any, um, response, um, Councilmember, um, Osborne, let's start with, um, Mr. Osborne.
I have none.
If you have anything. Okay.
No, I have none.
Councilmember, then, thank you. Councilmember Daniel Reed?
No, I think we've responded on the, uh, Best Western as to best we know, so we will operate from there. Thank you, everyone, for having us.
Thank you, um, Councilmember Pat Kearney.
Uh, I refer this to our city manager. Maybe he has an update on the situation at the Best Western.
Okay, um, what, what would be, uh, what's on the Best Western? An update?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, yes, um, responding to Mr. Kearney's, uh, request. We do have an update, uh, later on during the meeting, um, related to Project Room Key and the Best Western. Um, so we can, we can either wait until that point, or I can respond to some other specific questions.
Well, let's hold that till we get to that item yet.
Okay.
Let's hold that till we get to that item, then. Okay, anything else, uh, Councilmember Kearney?
No, that's it.
Okay, Mayor Protem Suarez?
Um, I do have comments, but they, they will be regarding the Project Room Key, so when we get to the item, I can discuss my comments.
Okay, thank you, Madam. Um, my comments would be, um, yes, there are, um, several Corona, um, testing sites. Of course, one in the Galleria, as mentioned, um, by the, um, the resident, and there was also a, a site in the city of Hawthorne and in the, um, area of Lenox, um, for coronavirus, um, um, testing. Um, as to the, um, where the, um, persons who have tested positive, where they may reside, or what area they may reside, or any information on people, um, that may, uh, have tested, um, um, positive, those information, that information is held, um, confidential. And so, there's no way for the city, from what I understand, to know who's, who's tested and what the result of their, their test was, whether it be negative or positive. So, there is no way to know that. We do, of course, know the, the overall numbers. Um, at this point, it's about ninety, ninety cases, um, the city of, of Landale. Of course, when they say the city of Landale or any city, these are cities where the person is saying that they are affiliated with, when they go to take their, their tests, and it might also include, um, incorporated areas that's right next to the city, um, but share the same, um, zip code. Um, so that's the best we can do on, on that end. Um, the question was about, was asked on whether or not, um, the state will, will buy the hotel, in this case, the, the Best Western. Um, I have not heard, um, the state, um, looking to buy the Best Western, um, hotel, so I have no information on the state looking to buy the Best Western hotel. Another question was asked by another, um, other writer concerning agreement with other, um, hotels. Um, I'm not sure until I'm actually, um, seen the actual, um, documentation. I, I am told that the, the county is looking to contract with another hotel in the city of Landale. I won't say which hotel that is at this point until I actually see something, um, in writing, but I was told that they are looking to contract with another hotel in the city of Landale for the, um, project on Room Key. And that would be my comments, uh, my response, I would should say, under public comment. So with that, in the case, we will move our agenda to item F, which is the consent calendar. There's three items on the consent calendar. Um, what is this pledge of the body concerning the consent calendar? Item, yes.
Councilman Reed?
Uh.
Sorry, if, just checking to see if there are no questions, I will make a motion to accept.
This is Mayor Protem Suarez. I do have a question. Um, it's just a general question for our finance director. Um, on the claims and demand, is there any incentive for us to, um, pay via A C H versus checks?
A C H would take, um, another workload to manage it, but it could be done. Checks, of course, there is, uh, costly to produce things by check, to review it manually, to put it in, to print them. So, it is something that we can look into. If you want us to come back and give you an analysis of, do we think it's a, you know, if we're able to do it, and is there any cost savings, we can do that.
I was just curious, because, uh, I, I didn't know if, if there's a difference for both payments and, uh, you know, if, if one is, is more or less work, but I, I'm guessing it's just something to take a look at if we could.
Okay, no problem. We can.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor by Councilmember Reed. Is there a second?
It's the Councilmember Kearney. I'll second it.
Okay, and seconded by Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, will the council please vote on the consent calendar? Um, Assistant Clerk?
For the consent calendar, uh, Mayor Protem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, sir. The next item on the agenda is item number four, an update on the use of the Best Western Hotel as a temporary homeless shelter. Let's have the staff report. City Manager.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight to update you on the Project Room Key program, currently in its fourth week of operation. The Best Western Hotel, located at fifteen thousand Hawthorne Boulevard in the city of Landale, is one of the flagship properties chosen to be a participant in Governor Gavin Newsom's Project Room Key program, which was designed to house homeless residents and keep them safe during the duration of the COVID nineteen pandemic. The hotel first began intake of clients on April twenty-third, and as of May eleventh, the hotel is now operating at full capacity with all ninety-seven of its available guest rooms currently occupied with one hundred and four of the South Bay's most vulnerable residents safely housed. Program is being funded by the state of California and managed by the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, with day-to-day operations in the hotel overseen by staff members from people assisting the homeless or PATH. Three meals a day are provided to the residents, and security and PATH staff members are at the hotel twenty-four hours a day to assist with keeping the guests of the hotel safe and respectful of the city of Landale's rules. Sheriff's deputies are also at the hotel several hours each day, as well as medical personnel to conduct temperature checks before each meal and on every person that enters the property. Twice daily visits to the hotel are performed by municipal services department staff, and regular updates are provided to the city manager and city council regarding conditions at the hotel. To date, there have been no incidents or problems with the property since this operation began, and the streets of Landale have been noticed be cleaner and free of homeless individuals. Outreach to homeless individuals in Landale is ongoing, and M S D staff continue to make contact with homeless residents and enter their information into the L A HOP system. In my last visit to the hotel, which was this afternoon, I was updated by a PATH supervisor that they are seeing some successful transitions of homeless clients into long-term housing. So far, two homeless residents have left the Best Western to be reunited with family members, and two homeless individuals were placed into a long-term housing provided by a faith-based organization. Additional information regarding Project Room Key has been put on the city of Landale website, and a link has also been provided to the county of Los Angeles website. I can answer any questions at this time if there are any.
Okay, are there any questions of, um, the city manager's report?
Uh, Mayor, this is Councilman Kearney. I have an observation.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Michael, I don't know if you have noticed, uh, lately in Landale, but, uh, on Marine, well, all the major arteries of Landale, there are new homeless people that I've never seen before. Have you had an influx in that?
Uh, you, we do have information on that. Um, in the first week of the hotel operation, we did see, uh, a number of people coming to City Hall. Uh, people were asking about the, the property, asking how they could get in. Um, I gave them my information. I took theirs. We entered them into L A HOP system. Um, whether or not they went into the hotel, I don't know. I do receive, uh, calls daily from homeless residents that are not in Landale looking for services. Um, I refer them to PATH and to appropriate agencies and, uh, but we don't, we don't try to provide them into any of our properties. We, we're not encouraging that. I do know that in working with homeless in other cities, uh, we would always talk up other cities to the homeless to try to get them to leave. Uh, I imagine there's a possibility that that is happening in, in our neighboring cities, but it's just speculative at this point.
All right, thank you.
Okay, are there any, uh, any additional questions, um, report?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, this is Mayor Protem Suarez, and my question is, is I recently attended a steering committee meeting for the South Bay Cities Council of Government, and there was mention that there were two other sites possibly located, one, I believe, in Manhattan Beach and the other in Redondo. I don't know if we've heard, um, if any of those have signed contracts with their hotels.
Uh, good evening, um, Mayor Protem. I, I don't have the answer to that. I do attend those meetings as well. Um, there was a lot of praise for the program from our neighboring cities, um, but whether or not they entered into contracts, I, I don't know at this point.
Have we heard, um, whether or not, sorry about that. Have we heard whether or not the, um, they started using, um, the, what was it called? The, um, Motel Six? Before, um, I know they had a contract with Motel Six, and there's one in, um, Torrance, and at least one in Inglewood. It was one that they, if they used those facilities. The reason why I ask is because if they have, hopefully that would provide, um, less than the incentive to have an additional location in or next to Landale.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I heard that as well. That was brought up at the meeting that I attended, uh, for the South Bay C O G, the homeless task force. Um, I know Torrance was opening a hotel. I believe it was a Motel Six, and I am aware that, uh, Inglewood also has a Motel Six. Um, I'm not sure if those are the, uh, hotels that are going to be turning into Project Room Key, um, operations, but I, I believe Torrance is one of the cities that is, is next in line.
Oh, okay. Because apparently, or allegedly, the, um, the state have entered a contract to use all of the Motel Six, so.
Uh, I, I heard that as well. Exactly, Mr. Mayor. I do recall, uh, Governor, uh, Gavin Newsom putting on a press conference about a month ago, saying that Motel Six had agreed to turn all their properties into Project Room Key sites. Um, if, if it's moved forward or not, I'm, I'm unaware.
Mr. Mayor, if I could weigh in on that briefly?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, this is City Attorney Tiffany Israel. The, um, the agreement with Motel Six is for the corporate-owned Motel Sixes, not for the ones that are individually franchised. So, we don't know yet which are which.
Okay. Got it. Thank you for that, clerk.
Mayor Robert, this is Councilman Kearney.
Yes, sir, council.
Tiffany can answer this. The one in San Dimas that had picketers out in front of it, that stopped them from signing an agreement, is that independently owned, or is that corporate? Do you know?
Uh, I do not know, but, um, I believe the San Dimas Hotel is going forward.
Because last word I had, they, uh, they stopped it.
Oh, well, as of, so my office represents the city of San Dimas, and as of last week, that was going forward. I don't know that they have people moved in yet, but that was going forward.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Tiffany, while we're on that note, can you, do you know of any cities that have, um, challenged the, um, the, the county, um, this project and have, um, been successful?
There are, several have tried to go, either to challenge the hotels or motels or the county, and no one has been successful.
Okay, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, let's see. Are there any other questions of the, the report?
This is Mayor Protem Suarez.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I, I just wanted, because I did have a comment based off of our resident's, um, um, inquiry, and, um, my personal opinion is, is I do not think that, um, as the media has painted this, this is a, a NIMBY response, but rather, you know, one of the things that we've brought up to the county is you have to look at the socioeconomic factors that impact our community specifically. So, for them to, you know, not even involve us in the initial engagement, that was a, a big concern, you know, and our other concern is why is Landale being targeted, uh, initially, and we're not seeing other hotels, you know, popping up around the South Bay, and yet they're trying to, you know, we're hearing that there's another one. So, it, it just seems as though we're a target, and I, and I have to say, I mean, it, as much as they're saying, you know, this is not political moves, I, I have to disagree. It just seems like they're, they're kind of pouncing on our city and, and, uh, you know, it's, we're going to be the one that's going to have to bear the consequences.
Yep. Well said.
Yes, absolutely. I, I agree as well. And going back on the comment that one of the, um, residents could ask about the, um, essentially she, I'm going to paraphrase her comment, the confluence, confluence, basically, on the lines of the, um, exit plan. And this is the same question that, um, not only the city of Landale, um, posed. Um, by the way, we did put up a vigorous, um, um, fight. I mean, we showed up at the mediation, um, um, status conference when another, um, city, um, did not show up. Um, and I'm not saying anything about that city, but when a federal judge, um, asks you to attend, um, a, a conference, um, slash mediation, I think it would be in the best interest of the city to actually, uh, participate in those, um, um, proceedings, and, and we did that. Um, I attended on behalf of, of the council. Um, but essentially, her, her, um, question was, was what is the e- exit strategy? And that was one of the questions that we, um, had, and I'm not sure which city it was, but there was another city on television last night, and the council member was basically, um, was saying that what was the exit strategy or what have you, um, that she was, um, posing. And the answer is, if you ask me, and I'm with the county, the answer that the county would give you is that each participant of Project Room Key will be placed in permanent or temporary of housing, um, more than likely outside of the city, uh, once the program is over. Now, the question is whether or not you can rely on that. Um, all we can do at this point is rely on their word, that they're gonna, um, the ninety-seven, um, occupants, um, there or so there are going to be placed in temporary shelters or permanent housing, um, uh, once the program is over. In the most cases, these temporary housing or permanent housing will be outside of the city of Landale. Obviously, if there's an opportunity for permanent housing in the city of Landale, then that would, you know, would be the case. They have ensured us that they won't be simply, um, left to their own devices and, you know, open up the door and they join the ranks of the homeless, um, population in the city of Landale. That's the promise or the guarantee that they have given the city. Who knows that, that, you know, how close to keeping that promise will they actually, um, get to once the program is over, but for now, that's all we can rely on, and, um, we hope that will be the case.
And, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, this is Kevin Chen, City Manager. Um, and the, the exit strategy, um, that is a, a concern of, of all the cities, uh, that, that have a Project Room Key Hotel. Um, and it's a, a lot of cities are putting pressure on the county to have that question answered. They've answered it, um, although, like you say, um, there's no guarantee, um, that they'll be able to find this permanent housing for, um, these, um, homeless guests once the program is over. However, um, um, just speaking with, um, Lasa and PATH, um, regarding the Best Western Hotel, um, they've mentioned to us that now that they have the hotel filled to capacity, um, they're changing their focus now from bringing, uh, homeless guests in to, um, having them work with, um, caseworkers, having, um, caseworkers work with the homeless guests to now try to find the, uh, permanent shelter. So, um, that is, as we understand it, is what's going on now. And as Michael mentioned, uh, so far, three of the guests have, um, um, already found, uh, permanent or temporary housing, um, outside of the hotel. So, um, you know, that is an indication that they are starting to do that.
Okay, great. Thank you for that, uh, for adding on to that. Are there any other discussions on, um, the update of Project Room Keys?
Nope. This is Councilmember Reed.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Okay. So, the motion has been made to receive and file the update of the use of Best Western by Reed. Is there any, is there a second on this motion?
This, this Councilman.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion has been made by, um, Councilmember Reed and seconded by, um, Paul Miles to receive and file the update on the use of the Best Western Hotel as a temporary housing shelter through Project Room Key. Is there any discussion on the motion? And now, with the Assistant City Clerk, please give the roll call. Please call the votes.
Trial number four, Mayor Protem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, sir. Next item on our agenda is consideration of future modifications to the city's operations due to COVID nineteen pandemic. Let's have the staff report.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Uh, this is Kevin Chen, City Manager. Um, at your last meeting on May fourth, um, the council considered whether, what to do with, um, two upcoming, um, city events, the Memorial Day Ceremony and the Health Safety and Pet Fair. Um, and, uh, at that meeting, the council, um, asked staff to, um, come back at this meeting, um, after, um, the end of the, uh, last county Safer at Home order was, um, set to expire on May fifteenth. Um, since that meeting on May fourth, um, the county did come out and amended their Safer at Home order on May thirteenth. Um, that order did allow for some reopening of some businesses and recreational facilities. However, it, it does, um, largely keep in place, um, the shelter-in-place, uh, type orders, um, social distancing, and the prohibition of private and public gatherings of, of any size. So, um, based on, um, the amended order and the fact that, um, it didn't change, um, the allowance for, uh, gatherings, um, at this time, staff unfortunately is recommending to the City Council that, um, you, you formally, uh, canceled the Memorial Day Ceremony. Um, however, um, in, in place of that, as we discussed at the last meeting, um, since it would be, um, uh, since the city would like to honor, um, those who have given their lives for our country, uh, as part of our, our nation's military, uh, we would like to move forward with a virtual ceremony, uh, where we can put together a video production and then air that on Memorial Day, as well as have that rerun, um, throughout the next weeks ahead, um, a- again, to, um, honor those who have, um, fought and died for the freedoms of our country. So, that is something that we are moving forward with now, um, in terms of producing that virtual ceremony. The, um, event, um, is, again, the Health Safety and Pet Fair, and, uh, with that event, we are recommending that that event also be canceled for the same reasons. Um, and also because of the fact that, um, uh, the, uh, SPCA, who we work with, um, to provide the pet vaccinations, um, is not available for this event due to, uh, COVID nineteen and the fact that they are working with a, a very small staff right now. So, uh, based on that, um, we ask that you formally cancel that event. However, we can look to an alternative, um, event, working with a local veterinarian, uh, where we can put on a, um, a, uh, vaccination clinic by appointment only, uh, where we would still be able to, uh, provide an opportunity for pet vaccinations, um, but, um, comply with the social distancing orders from the county and, uh, keep the public and, um, our employees safe. So, that, that is something that we can work on as an alternative. And, uh, with that, I will end my presentation and, um, answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you for that one report. Let's, um, let's take them item by item. Let's discuss the, um, the councilization of the Memorial Day Ceremony, um, first. Let's hear some thoughts on that, in no particular order, um, anyone have any thoughts on, on that?
Jim, I think it's one of those things where you just have to bite the bullet and do it.
Say that first part again for me, Jim.
I said, this is one of those things that we hate to do, but I think we just have to bite the bullet and do it this time. And try that, modify the approach, where Tom did the, uh, interviews and so forth, and pray that we can get back to some sort of normality for next year.
Yes, okay. Um, I agree as well. Anyone else have any thoughts on that? So, it sounds like we agree that we should put through the Memorial Day Ceremony and, and do the video presentation. Okay, so, so that would be the, the order without any objections? Okay, what about the Health, Safety and Pet Fair? Any thoughts on that?
Jim, again, and I, I guess kind of the same situation, even though it is a little later. You know, uh, I have one question though, and I think I already know the answer, but it's a perfect situation. You know, there's news today of this potential vaccine, and I don't see it happening in just a matter of weeks, but if, if there was a better situation for that future date, I think I already know the answer, though. It's too late at this point to, uh, make some sort of, uh, plan, that if everything worked out in a better circumstance, that we could still hold something. Kevin, is that, I think you're right, that it's probably just too late at this point to pick another startup date? Or is there a possible one?
Well, we, we could certainly, um, look at that. Um, I guess it just depends when that would occur, and also it depends, um, what, uh, the county's orders are at that time. If they do allow for, uh, public gatherings or public events, um, then that's something I suppose we could look into. Um, but again, you know, the other thing is the availability of the SPCA. Um, as I understand it, um, the pet vaccination, that's the largest, um, draw for, for this event, and that's, uh, the reason why we, we get, um, so many people for this event. So, without having them, um, it, it may not make for a successful event like in previous years. So, it just depends on timing.
Yeah, that's what I, uh, well, looking at it. I just wanted to hear it again. Yeah, I think it's just another case of something we have to forego for this year, just like Memorial Day, and hope and pray that we can do it next year.
Once again, I agree. Are there any other, um, discussion on, on that item, any other, um, thought? Okay, if that being the case, it seems like we have consented to also cancel the Health, Safety and Pet Fair as well. So, if that being the case, that would be the order? Anything else that you, uh, manage on, with just those two items? Okay, without any objection, that would be the order, that we cancel both Memorial Day, um, ceremony as well as the, the Health and Safety and Pet Fair.
This is Mayor Protem Swires, I'll make the motion.
Okay, so the motion has been made, um, by Mayor Protem Swires, um, is there a second motion?
I'll second it.
Was that, um, Kearney or was that, um, who was that?
This is Kearney.
So, second motion.
That can do it if you want to. I, I said I second it if we talk to the town.
Okay, so we'll put down Osborne as a second. So, the motion has been made by Swires and specifically by Osborne, that we counsel both Memorial Day Ceremony and the Health and Safety and Pet Fair. Um, let's have a vote, uh, Assistant City Clerk.
On item number five, Mayor Protem Swires?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Paul and Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thanks, sir. Next item, item number six is, um, reconsider the administrative pay leave status of part-time employee during the COVID nineteen pandemic. Let's have a staff report. Is Mr. City Manager available?
Uh, yes, um, Mr. Mayor, um, is Rayla not on the call? Uh, Rayla will provide that presentation.
Oh, okay. Is Rayla, um, available? I don't know, uh, Matthew, is, um, is Rayla on the, the line?
I'm looking, it looks like she's, she's there, but, uh, her phone is off. Let me go poke my head out, I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can I say something while we wait for Rayla?
No.
You, you wanna hear what I have to say? I actually just confirmed with, um, the City Attorney for San Dimas, that I was incorrect, that they did, and Motel Six did end up backing out. They didn't have, um, a signed agreement, and so the Motel Six did back out. Councilmember Kearney was correct.
That's a first for me.
Hardly.
Can you confirm whether that's a franchise or, um, corporate?
Um, it, let me see if I can find out more on that. I will report back if I can find that out. Oh, well, he said, um, he said Motel Six corporate didn't want to negatively, didn't want negative publicity among the residents, so it must have been corporate.
Okay, it's corporate, maybe corporate, yeah. Well, I guess Best Western doesn't care about having a negative reputation.
Well, I was thinking.
Well, I was surprised when they said Motel Six was gonna do it in the first place. Right? Okay, so, while he's giving, um, the technology together for item, item six, let's see, why don't we, we'll give him a few seconds, if not, we'll table this and come back to this item, so we can keep the agenda moving. Okay, it sounds like we might be in.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember, I'm, I'm on. Somehow I was, I was dropped.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um-
Go ahead with the report.
Okay, um, tonight, um, city staff is seeking direction on how to proceed with the paid administrative leave status of, of our non-working part-time employees assigned to closed or discontinued programs and services. Um, in response to the various Safer at Home orders issued by the state and county officials, the city has supported these orders, um, by declaring a local emergency and, uh, making operational changes to include the closure of city facilities to the public, canceling and or suspending city events and recreational activities, and provided paid administrative leave to employees to ensure that they were not financially affected by the operational changes. Um, as a result, um, departments have started phasing in, uh, return of work protocols for his full-time employees. However, uh, we're, we're now confronted with the lack of work opportunities for all of our sixty-six active part-time employees. Um, providing consistent pay leave to part-time employees, um, has resulted in higher payroll costs, department overruns, and increased in exposure to long-term pension liability, which would require the city to enroll certain part-time employees into CalPERS due to the increased number of hours that, um, we're paying. Um, for the last eight weeks, the city has paid its part-time employees between sixteen to twenty-two thousand dollars per pay period for non-work hours, uh, for a total of seventy-five thousand. Um, we have additional three more pay periods to go through, through the end of this fiscal year. The COVID nineteen global pandemic, the Safer at Home Shelter-in-Place orders continue to be extended, and it's uncertain as to when the city will be able to reinstate its programs and services. The city cannot continue to provide paid leave benefits with employees indefinitely without having some significant impacts to city finances. Um, in efforts to protect the city's financial future, um, staff has discussed options for addressing this issue and is now recommending, um, that we reconsider the paid administrative leave. As such, staff is asking direction from council to reconsider the paid administrative leave benefits for his part-time employees and direct staff to take a look at, over overview of the current operations, determine which part-time employees can continue, and to initiate the layoff process in compliance with city policy and applicable memorandum of understandings. Um, staff is available to answer any questions you may have on this item.
Okay, um, are there any, um, questions on, uh, this report? Item number six.
Well, I have one question, Robert, Jim.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, for Rayla, is it too soon to say, if, if worse comes to worse and, and we have to, uh, take people off, or, I mean, we hate to do, but we can understand the circumstances? Is there a, is there a number, or is it way just too soon to tell on something like that?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Councilmember Al- Osborne.
I said, do you have a number? Of affected individuals, I mean, or is it too soon to tell?
Oh, oh, yes, um, basically, we, we, we can continue to employ probably about fourteen of the sixty-six. Um, the main department that is impacted the most by this is our community service department, and that's a total of fifty-six part-time employees.
We're having no events, you know?
Right. The parks are closed, we don't have any events, um, so we're, we're limited into what special projects we could actually have them come in and perform during this period of time.
Okay, so all about, you said all, all but fourteen, is what you said, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
This is Mayor-
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, this is Mayor Protem Swires. Uh, this is a question for our finance director. I know we had a general forecast, a rough forecast, that we'd be short, I think it was one million for the next fiscal year. Is that, I'm assuming that, is that taken into account, these part-time employees, or would the number increase?
The number includes those being paid throughout the year. So, actually, the number as of right now, cause we, we're working on next year's budget, um, we've made some adjustments, but including the part-timers in our budget, we will, the general fund will be short one million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, approximately, for next year.
And does that include the, I mean, cause that, now we're running into the, um, pension liability, um, situation, so i- is that another added cost that would, or is that all still including?
That's, but we don't have, we don't have anything as far as the increase right now. I know we're talking about, that, they're not PERS annuance, the most of them are not receiving that. They are not getting pension, the part-timers.
Right.
That we're getting into an issue where some of them will become it once they get over a certain amount of hours, and I believe Rayla may have some numbers on that, I'm sorry, Rayla for throwing under the bus, um, but I believe a, a few people are getting to where they're meeting the maximum amount, and once they become PERS annuance, they will continue to be it from there on out.
Right.
Yes, and Marla is correct, that we have some classifications that, um, are exempt from PERS, but we have some classifications that are not. And right now, we have about five people that are getting close to reaching a thousand hours, and if we don't curtail that, um, they would potentially have to be enrolled into PERS.
Same as it is for every city, I mean, you-
Yes.
You run the risk if you exceed the thousand hours and from permanent, and then you have that, you know, a, a handle responsibility, you can't do it.
Well, let me ask you this, so once they become, um, permanent annuance, um, which means they enroll into the PERS, so what does that do for, um, our bottom line? Does that mean, obviously, we contribute, we will be contributing to PERS, so you would be contributing perpetuity as long as they're employed, or even after employed, or how does that work?
Correct. Yes, so as long as, once they become a member, they're always a member, and the city will be responsible for paying its portion towards the benefit.
Okay, got it. And so, do we have any recommendations, or is that for, um, to close this, um, one million dollars, um, uh, I think I heard you say there was a shortfall of, of a million dollars if we, is that if we don't do anything from this point on, have we already reached that point where there's a million dollars gap?
This is next fiscal year, so we're talking fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, and we have had a budget subcommittee meeting, today we had one. We have discussed options- We have discussed options, and we are working on those to close the budget shortfall for next fiscal year.
Are there recommendations for next year, all right?
Correct, next fiscal year is where we have the shortfall. We're trying to balance our budget for next year.
There you go.
And we say next fiscal year, is this the fiscal year which we will be adopting in July?
Correct, it has to be adopted by July first, so it's coming up next month, we'll have to finalize it.
So these are recommendations for what you're working on now.
What Rayla is talking about is for, is to discontinue, um, paying the administrative leave of the time staff. What I'm talking about is the budget for next fiscal year and the shortfall, where we may have to take action now so that it, we don't have the problem for the entire fiscal year next year. So it's starting on, take actions now so that as July one, we are in a position that we can balance our budget.
Exactly, I understand. Okay, are there any other questions? Yes, councilman.
Uh, councilmember, we and I are on the subcommittee, and, uh, I know it's a terrible thing, but we have plans in the future to bring that number from sixty-six down to seven, maybe fourteen. And I would suggest that the people we have now, their stay-at-home order, use their sick leave vacation time, after that, two weeks unpaid, and after that, go on unemployment, because it, it's a big downfall. We're paying a lot of money for these individuals to stay at home, and some, some don't feel like they have to come back, they're still afraid, but I found out that some of them have a second, a second job already.
Yeah.
So we're, they're double dipping, and I don't, you know, at the city's expense, you know, this is my city, this is all of our cities, let's, let's take care of the problem now. So I would recommend that we tell them to take their sick leave, if they have any, vacation time, two weeks unpaid vacation, and then go on unemployment. Because we, you know, we have, still have, what, a month, month, almost a month and a half to go before the new budget.
Yeah.
Right, so, so if we were to discontinue the paid administrative leave, um, all of our current employees that are currently off with no work would no longer receive paid leave, um, and we would encourage them to use their available leave banks that they have currently on the books. If they don't have any leave, then they would be unpaid. Um, and then we would look to see which employees we can continue to maintain within the city operations, and the ones that we can't, we would start the layoff process.
This, this councilman Kearney again, with the community service department, with the rec leaders, the subcommittee, I recommended that we do it by seniority, because we have a couple individuals that have been there over twenty, twenty-five years, that we keep them on board. But you know, Robert, uh, rec, rec leaders are a revolving door with their, they come in, they leave, they come in, they leave. So we do that by seniority basis.
Oh, I think they would anyway, right?
Yeah, well.
I would agree, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Um, and I agree with your, your recommendations, uh, councilman, uh, at Kearney.
Okay.
Um.
Rayla, you were saying by seniority anyway, though, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, I agree.
Okay, it sounds like we have three people.
Okay, that's, okay, that's four.
And, and this is Mayor Protem Suarez. Yeah, it's, it's a very difficult situation to be put in, but at the same time, if we don't do something now, it, it, we could have, um, less choices and, you know, have to make even tougher decisions if we don't get ahead of it. So, um, you know, my job has, you know, just me personally, there's a lot of layoffs in my job, you know, pay cuts all around, and, um, you know, it's, it's unfortunate, but, you know, hopefully this gets over with soon and, and, you know, we get things back to normal, but for now, we have to think about the city as a whole.
We're not the only city, it's virtually all cities in the state are having to make the same tough choices.
Yes, but we are one of the few cities that, um, for the past two months have kept our, um, our part-timers on, um, on payroll. Um, so, because we wanted to, to show that we were, um, that we are rather, um, in this, um, together and provide that relief for our, our employees, our part-timers. But at some point, um, the budget can't continue to sustain that, that type of, um, expenditures.
Exactly, and we enacted that, we did not know exactly where we were headed at that point, so I think we did the right thing. Now we have another.
Yeah, so it sounds like we, um, reached, have reached consensus, but I'm going to ask for, um, a, a motion so it will be official, um, to these recommend, adopting these recommendations.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes, sir.
Now, we'll make the motion to go along with, uh, staff's recommendation to discontinue the paid administrative leave, review the current allocation of part-time staff members, and, or determine which can still be employed and initiate layoff proceeds for those employees not working within compliance of city personnel rules and regulations under our MOU.
Mr. Councilmember, I will second it.
Okay, that would be the motion, and seconded by Reed and seconded by Kearney. Are there any discussions on the motion? Seeing now with the, with the city clerk, please, um, take the vote.
Item number six, Mayor Protem Suarez.
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne.
Sadly, yes.
Councilmember Reed. Regrettably, yes. Councilmember Kearney.
Yes.
Mayor Paul Miles.
Unfortunately, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, sir. Item eight is the city manager's report. The city manager has anything to report?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr., sorry, Mr. Mayor, I have my stuff on mute.
Yes, sir.
Mayor and, um, members of the city council, uh, just a very brief report. Um, again, with the COVID- nineteen pandemic, um, the city has had to make modifications to its, um, operations, um, including, um, closing city hall and our facilities to the public, as well as, um, we've made, um, minor modifications to our hours of operation, um, from, um, seven AM to six PM to, uh, eight PM, eight AM to five PM. Um, however, with, uh, um, decisions being made at the state and county level to begin reopening our society, uh, we've also taken steps to do that as well. And as of, um, as of today, we've, um, reverted back to our original hours of operation, which again is seven AM to six PM. And, uh, we are, um, also, uh, looking at measures that we can take, um, when the, when the day comes to fully reopen our facilities to the public, um, to have measures in place, uh, for the safety of the public and our employees. So those are some things that we're working on now, and we will be ready, again, once that date and time comes. So with that, that's, that's all I have for tonight, and I turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you, um, Mr. City Manager for that report. Item number seven is item from the mayor and the city council. Any meetings, anything you want to share, let's start with Councilmember Osborne.
Thank you, Robert, but I have nothing to share.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilmember Daniel Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I did attend the virtual Contract Cities meeting for Officer Installation, our outgoing President Sandra Armenta, and incoming Lindsay Horvath. Uh, it was a good virtual presentation, well put together, and that is all I have to report. I wish everyone a happy Memorial Day, and looking forward to our virtual presentation.
Thank you, sir. Um, Councilman Pat Kearney.
Okay, thank you, Robert. Uh, Kevin and I attended my telecommunications, a lobby, trust, and oversight committee last Wednesday. Uh, I also attended telecommunications with Lindsay Horvath being sworn in, I don't say it for a minute, she had to leave. Also attended the first, I don't know what you call it, Robert, where Robert, Dan, Mike, S T's, and myself were there, and were given, uh, care packages to the needy in Landale. And also, uh, I want to give a heads up that, I don't know, Jim Uminor, Fay George, she passed away last Tuesday at the age of eighty-five. With that, I pass it on to my colleague.
There you go, thank you. Mayor Protem Suarez.
Um, I just attended last week the, um, steering committee, uh, meeting for the South Bay City Council of Government, and, um, I, I did bring up a point earlier from what, what I thought was interesting regarding, um, public room key, but that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Okay, I just have a couple of, um, a couple of items I want to, um, to go over. Um, one, um, I did attend the, um, city selection committee, um, virtual, uh, meeting. This was the first time that we had a meeting, um, teleconference, um, because until the pandemic, we weren't allowed to have meetings, um, um, per teleconference. I say that because, um, this is one of the harder meetings, we didn't get a quorum. Um, the last time I attended a meeting, we didn't get a quorum to the third attempt. And you're talking about going downtown or Pasadena, um, after work, um, only not to have a quorum on that, kind of, you know, disheartening. And so we were able to get a quorum this time because it was, um, um, online or on tele, teleconference, and we're trying to get the state legislature to allow that body to have at least some type of modified, um, quorum system, because it's hard to get a quorum. Um, the biggest item they had, um, on the agenda was an appointment to a couple of, um, bodies, one of which was the, the, um, library district. Um, uh, oh, and unfortunately, on that one, for some reason, they couldn't hear me. Um, I heard everything, but for some reason, so I had to kept communicating with, to the chair through text, so I don't know their web X, um, presentation didn't go as smoothly as they would have liked it to have went, but tried to get it done anyway. Also attended the, um, sanitation, um, district, um, regular meeting, that once again was, um, through, um, Zoom. So those would be the meetings that I'll attend, have two items I want to bring up tonight, um. One is the, um, to visit the, the street sweeping, um, um, issue. Um, Mr. City Manager, I'm looking at, um, whether or not we should at least revisit, um, cleaning the streets on major corridors. I'm looking at these major corridors, and they're really in disarray, and, uh, when we first decided not to, um, issue tickets, of course, the thought was that there was an, was not enough parking for people, um, in their residential streets or what have you. Um, I didn't really think about the major streets where technically people, like, say, for instance, Hawthorne Boulevard, would not be parked, you know, Hawthorne Boulevard, um, or shouldn't be parked on Hawthorne Boulevard, um, you know, overnight or what have you, um, anyway. So I don't know if it's, if it's time that we should revisit that or not, uh, particularly on Prairie, Hawthorne, um, maybe even Inglewood, although I don't really see Inglewood Avenue as being as, for some reason, that's pretty clean.
Manhattan, Marine.
Yes, sir. Who was that?
That was Jim, I said, uh, Manhattan Marine, thanks for bringing this up, Robert, I meant to as well, you reminded me, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, so I think we should revisit that, uh, Mr. City Manager, if you can take a look at that and, and see which, which would be the best way to address those major corridors.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, I, I'd be glad to do that and report back to you, um, at your next meeting. We can, um, uh, take a look at that and, um, bring back, um, both the pros and cons. Um, since, um, the, um, parking enforcement was suspended for street sweeping, um, you know, we, we knew that, um, the streets obviously would not be swept, um, regularly, um, as well as thoroughly. And so, um, the, uh, I, I've been working with the Public Works Department to, uh, try to have them go out and do spot cleaning where they do see trash accumulating, and, um, they have tried to do that, um, you know, at times, I'm, I'm, I think the streets are, are cleaner than others, other times they're dirtier than others. So, um, yeah, I think that would be an opportunity where we could, um, probably, um, uh, uh, change, um, our approach a little bit and, and just sweep the, the major corridors, uh, particularly on Prairie, uh, as I understand it, on Street Sweeping Day, uh, the practice has been for residents that usually park on the, um, on the west side of the street to park on the east side of the street, um, so that probably won't be as problematic for them as for, um, you know, some other smaller residential streets. So it's definitely something we can take a look at and, and report back on.
Okay, thank you for that. And also, um, speaking of that, um, I'm encouraging, um, also the homeowners to sweep, um, in front of their property. Um, I walk the street, um, pretty often, and so do some other councilmembers, and there is a lot of homes that have, uh, streets that have, um, just debris and stuff, just, just sitting in front of their homes. When we said that we were in all, in this altogether, that's what we meant. And so it, to me, it doesn't seem like it's that much of a hardship for people to get out and sweep in front of their home, not in front of anyone else's home, but in front of their home. Uh, there's, there's streets that I walk down every, you know, every day, and the same trash, um, is, is just compiled there when someone can easily sweep that up. And there's other streets where the neighbors, I see neighbors, um, sweeping the trash up or what have you, and maintaining the streets or what have you, and it works wonderful. So I'm just encouraging the, the homeowners, if we're going to keep, keep this up in terms of, um, not ticketing for, uh, street cleaning, that they take five minutes out of their day and sweep in front of their, their house, um, when they see there's trash or debris there. Um, and I think we also need to take a look at some of these, um, lots, there's a, a lot of, um, commercial properties, and for some reason, the, the property owners decided that because we're in a pandemic, you don't need to maintain the weed, you know, and, and what weeds, you don't need to maintain the place. Um, you go down Hawthorne Boulevard, and you walk down Hawthorne Boulevard, um, one is a, a former car lot, and the weeds are just out of control. And why they don't maintain those is beyond me, so I think we need to take a look at those and make sure that we maintain the cleanliness of this city, even in a pandemic, as much as we can, because there's no reason. Um, lawn services still, from what I understand, people are still doing lawn, they're still doing landscape, and things of that nature, so why do people decide they're not maintaining the property, that's really beyond me. So I think we need to.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Reed.
Yes, sir.
Yep, I agree, and, uh, along our block over here, we have, uh, some folks that are actually, uh, moving their car when the street sweeper comes around and then pulling back over, so, you know, it's a matter of each block, let's take care of our premonity and keep things pretty, I appreciate it.
That's wonderful. Uh, okay, and the last. Yes, sir.
I, I agree with you, the street sweeping, I know, I have to clean up in front of my house almost every day, people are just pigs, but I think we might have a problem if you just do the major thoroughfares and not the, uh, city streets themselves, because people are going to raise all kinds of, you know, headaches. Well, how come I get a ticket, but my neighbor on one fifty-third don't get a ticket? I think we have to do it uniformly, the whole city, and here's my plan, uh, option. I think we should start at June first, back to get, back getting tickets, but instead of tickets, you can get either pay the ticket, or you can come out with a broom and a dustpan and clean up around your car, and have it signed up by one of our, uh, our key and our street, street sweeping control officers, and I'm signing off. Because I know, I walk through the city hall every day, and there's the same locations, like you said, have the same junk there, and the residents are not going to pick it up, they said, you know, there, it's supposed to be an all altogether, but we're not. I said, well, I didn't throw it there, I said, it takes a broom and a dustpan, it takes five minutes, five minutes to pick it up. No, I didn't put it there, I'm not picking it up. So I think we should implement this June first, and give them the option of either getting a ticket or have, or can enforcement come by, you clean up around your car, and they'll sign off the ticket. And maybe that'll help. And maybe that'll help.
That's true, that can prove the more deal. Let, let's have them to take a, take a look at that and, you know, let the city manager see how we can employ that.
Okay.
I like the encouraging of having people clean up, no question.
Yeah.
Only problem is in the residential, you still do have a lot of people who are home because they're out of work or whatever. You're still going to have a problem, that's why we increased parking dollar on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of people still at home. You know, there's a lot of people still at home. Now, what happens is people are able to get out for a few minutes to do their essentials or whatever they deem necessary. Um, but they're not out for eight hours, um, well, ten hours, um, because they're not at work. They're working remotely. So you can come home and find out that there, there is no parking spot for you because you, you left your parking spot. Um, which is one of the reasons why, you know, I, you know, I walk the city, um, pretty, pretty often. But I leave my car on the street, uh, because now that, um, you know, I always have problems with people blocking my driveway. If I move my car, the, the, the problem I have is someone will be parked there, blocking my driveway. And they're not just parked there for the night. They're parked there for now three or four days because of the, you know, the pandemic or what have you. And so that's a problem. So you're right, a lot of people are still at home.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and I just have one, one last item, um, just one last item. So, uh, according to some, the, the state of, well, not just the state of California, but probably the United States, um, is moving into, um, either a, a recession or even a depression, depending on who, who you add. And I remember the last time we had a recession and an economic downturn, um, a lot of the cities was really, um, really put a lot of the cities in bad financial conditions where, where some of the cities are still trying to recover from their economic downturn. I think this is a time where we can, um, try to get ahead as much as possible of that anticipated, um, economic, um, downturn that is definitely, um, on its way, if, if not here already. Uh, with that being seen, I'm going to, um, propose that, um, the formation of a, a business revitalization subcommittee. Um, this committee will consist of the mayor and one member of the city council, along with the, the city staff. Uh, now, the committee will function, um, like a working group to explore ways to increase revenues to the city. Um, and the subcommittee will engage the business community on issues such as business retention and business attraction. The subcommittee will solicit the participation of local business owners, Los Angeles County Economic Development Corporation, the South Bay Workforce Investment Board, schools of business at local universities, including USC, Loyola Marymount University, Cal State Domingo Hills, and other colleges for their suggestions and their input. Now, the goal of the committee is to, um, issue a report to the city council for their consideration on adopting economic development tools and strategy that will place the city of Landale in a better economic position during the next economic downturn and beyond. And so the whole idea would, would be that this would be a working group of, of members of the city staff and two council members and working with the business community and academics to basically provide, if you will, a blueprint of, um, tools and strategies that we can deliberate on that would be best suited, um, for our city so that we'll be in a better position once the recession hit, um, you know, even beyond on that. So I'm going to ask, um, that, that item be placed for, on a future, a future agenda for consideration.
Hey, Robert.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, hey, Robert, this is Mayor Pro Tem Suarez. I'm very much interested, so I'd like to throw my hat, um, in, into that. If you do do that, I'd like to throw on that committee, subcommittee.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Thank you. Anyone else have any suggestions on that?
Since it's, Mayor, this is Tiffany Israel. Since it's not on the agenda, we should really bring it back before, um, a third person weighs in.
Oh, yes, ma'am, okay.
As long as there's consensus to bring it back, we'll bring it back.
Yes, that's why we have it there. That's why we have it there.
And, Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, we will, we will have this on your June first agenda.
June first, okay, um, yes, ma'am, yes, sir. Okay, let's see, I think that's it for me, I was kind of lengthy tonight. But one was left over from last week, I forget. Alrighty, so that will be it for me. We do have one other item on the agenda, and that is a closed session to confer with legal counsel concerning anticipated litigation. Um, I'm going to have the city attorney to give us the closed session provisions.
The city council will be in closed session on one item pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine D four to allow the city council to consider whether to initiate litigation in one case against the Best Western Plus South Bay Hotel and the County of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're going to stand, um, recess for closed session. Okay, we have returned from closed session. I'm going to ask the city attorney to give a report of a closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council met in closed session on one item as agendized as item J eight pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine D four. The city council was updated, no reportable action. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that report. Okay, it's a German time. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Landale City Council will be held at six thirty PM Monday, June the first, um, twenty twenty. It is now eight thirty, and this meeting is adjourned.